We've got to know that, because of course we want to re-up.
You all want to re-up, right?
I think so.
You all want to re-up.
I think so. I'm not promising anything you would like to know. All right, we have one more minute. Bill should be strolling in the knock, he can pop over.
So three tonight, should be relatively.
What's that?
Only three tonight, should hopefully be pretty quick.
These are...
What do we got for official count? Seven oh one. I'll give him a couple of minutes. The clock's wrong, seven oh one right now. Okay, officially it's seven o'clock, so we can start the meeting. Again, we are being recorded, and if you could put your cellphones on vibrate. Gentlemen, how do you want to do this? Bill's not here, we want to start the meeting. Do you want to be vice?
Sure.
And John, you'll vote on the first one?
Yeah, until when he shows up.
Yeah, we'll just figure it out when that happens. Okay, so it being seven o'clock, Vice Chairman will... We have, let's see, hold on one second. Oh, there he is, right there.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
It was a short vice chairmanship.
It was good, though. Distinct distinguished.
Excellent job.
Can't believe it.
Fine job. Morning, afternoon, sorry.
Evening.
Okay, now it being seven o'clock, past seven o'clock, we will go over new and old business. Approval minutes from, you say October?
Yeah.
October 12th, 2017. We're not going to do November, I'm going to do the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 12th, 2017 meeting. Second?
All approved.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. It being seven o'clock, Vice Chairman will read the first petition.
Abington Zoning Board Appeals hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 14th, 7:00 P.M. Abington Town Office is 500 Glenowitz Way. On the petition of Matt Loughlin, 251 Park Avenue, Abington, for a front and rear yard side setback finding, special permit to exceed maximum lot coverage, and variance for lot area to construct an addition at 251 Park Ave under 17529 MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, property located on Assessors Map 32, Lot 38, in the R30 Zone.
From the Saw Commission, no bearing on the saw system.
Vice Chairman, come on up.
Hey, you can sit right there, sir. There you go. And...
State your case.
Well, I have a pre-existing non-conforming lot that I'd like to build an addition on. Just... The reasoning is, I don't have, I really can't build anything, because I'm non-conforming to begin with. So I'm just asking for the relief to build the addition.
So, in what respects was it non-conforming?
The lot size, I'm over on 400.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's the 30,000.
Do you have any, um... Any plans that show? I saw the property.
Yep.
I mean, you're there on, what's it, Park Ave with the railroad tracks right behind you.
Yep.
Were you before us a couple of years ago, or was that another house on the...
That's my first time.
Kind of a tight lot, huh? Really?
We get, yeah, we get a lot on Park Ave, that's why I was asking. So you're looking to go, if we're facing the street to the right?
Yes, correct.
How does the, um... Like, on the front of the property, everything slopes to the street. What's the topography in the back of the property?
It's pretty, it's pretty level, other than the back hill up to the tracks. That's pretty steep there, but...
Are the tracks higher or lower than your property?
Higher.
I ask because part of the thing we have to consider when you're looking at a variance from allowed lot coverage is, where's the water go? You know, and that's why we, they have limits on, like, you can only put, like, whatever it is, 20 or 25 or 30 percent coverage. So when I was looking at your lot, and I'm familiar with Park Ave, obviously a lot of it would run towards the street, because that's the natural slope, but I had no idea, you know, what if we do in the back? And it looks like in your cases, you know, if you don't have the drain, it's just, it's just going to pull back there. You're not going, I guess ultimately you're not affecting the people to your left or your right, is my thought. And so if this was a pre-existing non-conformity, we just have to make a determination whether or not it...
More non-conforming.
It's more non-conforming, correct?
Yeah, it's a finding in, uh... In terms of the setbacks, because it's already pre-existing, non-conforming in those two respects. And a special permit in terms of the coverage. The area, it's already pre-existing as well, non-conforming. It's 8400, it's required to have 30,000. As to that area variance, he may be... I don't see the calculations here with regards to what the coverage is, whether he's exceeding the 25 percent that's allowed as it exists.
Yeah, it go to 31 percent?
It was 31. I didn't see that.
You mean exist, I'm sorry, Marshall, existing, you think it's about 31 percent coverage?
Bring me to 31 percent?
Okay.
Oh, no. Okay, then, it is not currently non-conforming in that respect.
Correct.
Therefore, it is a new non-conformity. That's what requires the variance. So, and, yes, he is, has asked, in my opinion, for the correct relief.
So it's a special permit for the lot coverage, and then it's a variance for the lot areas?
Yes.
Right. Then you've got to follow the recall on the topography size.
No.
In addition to the fact that it's, like, the Dedrick case, more non-conforming.
Yeah, Ded...
At a Chatham.
Dedrick v. Chatham, yes.
What type of structure is this now? Is this a garage or bedrooms?
One garage under with a couple bedrooms.
So no cellar?
Well, actually, yeah, there will be, because the first half of the first floor will be living space with basement under, so it'll be half basement, slab under the garage end. So it'd be the right side would be slab.
Okay.
Have you talked to your neighbors?
I have not, no.
Compared with your neighbors, yours is pretty busy. This will be pretty busy. Even though it's a small lot, no, everybody else is pretty small, too. This is like, almost maximizing the lot. And the intent of my lot, too, is to have room in this stuff.
What town is this?
R30.
R30?
Yes. 30,000 square feet. Again, when he first pushed into this, I can understand back then it was small. But now we're just making it more non-conforming.
Any more questions, guys? I'm going to open it up to the floor. Okay, I'm opening it up to the floor, any questions from the floor?
I'm one of the neighbors, I just had a question about the actual physical size and dimensions of the addition.
Do you state your name and address first, please?
Williamson 235, Abington.
This is 30 feet deep by 28 lot.
And what are you going to do with the driveway that's on the left side? Now that's going to be eliminated and be on the right inside.
Undecided at this point. It may, it may say, I know that'll also require another special permit. Just under the footage for the distance between.
Any other questions? Guy closing to the floor now. Marshall, any opinions on that?
I don't see, uh... You're either going to allow the gentleman, the applicant, to expand, or you're going to tell him that he's got to, if he needs more room, he's going to have to sell this and buy a bigger house in an area that allows for this. And is there a hardship? That's for you guys to decide.
That was my question.
Do you...
I believe the hardship is I can't build, I couldn't build anything without being, without applying for a variance. My hardship is my small lot.
That's not really a hardship for me.
Well, hardship is based on, you know, financial shape, topography, or soil conditions. In this case, could be argued it's the shape where the lots
are not...
under a third of what is the area is zoned for. I think that's why, in some ways, you see a lot of people on Park Ave. It's not always for a variance sometime, I mean, sometimes just for a special permit. Because everything's so close to the, to the property lines.
Exactly. This, in this case, it's, if it were a special permit only, this makes, would make it different, but this is pretty much maximizing the lot. And so what does it do for the rest of the neighborhood, the character? Does it derogate from the neighborhood? These are all questions that, in the hardship, from the topography of that, is something that's already existing, so I don't see it.
Well, we don't have a lot of neighbors here to complain.
No, that's true. That's right.
Everyone, I mean, by law, they were all given notice.
That's right.
The house would, the proposal would be 36 feet from, what's it, the...
For the lot.
Starbird, which is to the right on the lot.
Yeah. And you're already over here, so it doesn't matter.
The variances, what, the variances for what? Specifically for lot area.
Yeah.
So max coverage, a lot area in this area is what, 25 percent? Or is it 30 percent?
25.
25.
So he's 6 percent over. According to your calculation.
Yeah. More or less.
Rather than grid all this out and do the math and all, we'll take you at your word at that point. So then, the reason people come to us, variances specifically, is to see is whether or not, you know, like, in this case, for a lot, a lot area coverage is, again, to make sure that what you're doing isn't going to derogate someone else's property. So, um...
You don't, you don't want the whole neighborhood coming in.
And it falls under the Dedrick case.
Just deal with what we got here.
Let me see. The addition be if he was to be right at...
Have you consulted with your planner, if there's any way that you could come up with a plan that didn't require a variance?
Well, it wouldn't, I mean, what would that entail, really? Wouldn't be that sizable, right?
Can you go up higher?
Does your coverage include the driveways? In his calculation?
I believe so, he's got it on the, he's got the, he's got it marked out.
Then by reducing the driveway, the amount of driveway...
Right, eliminating the driveway.
Um, that, if that is included, it should be, in my opinion, included in the coverage. And by reducing that, to yield you the allowed 25 percent, you would no longer need a variance.
Where would you put your tire?
But your calc...
There's another driveway over here, so...
He's got two driveways over.
There is one garage involved in this.
Is the driveway paved, the existing driveways paved?
Yes, it is.
So that's considered impervious surface?
Which is coverage.
Right.
You can make that a condition.
So there's multiple options in terms of tearing it up, putting down crushed bank instead for a driveway, not having two driveways, shortening the driveway, I don't know what that would do to the calculations, but that...
Is going to help.
That can be made as a condition of the, of this, and then you're not forced to issue hardship there. It's just special permits and findings for finding for the pre-existing, existing non-conformities, and a special permit for the coverage.
That's going to require us to sort of make those calculations at this time, right? Unless you want...
I don't know that you have to make those calculations. You can just stipulate that
We can...
The driveway has to go.
Your relief could be
Based on...
Based on those calculations, and you'd go back to his engineer and come back with me. Or you could just postpone your decision, if you want to think about it, and render your decision at a later date.
So what, if my, you know, if my rudimentary calculations are correct, what we're talking about is you're about 500 square feet over, over on the coverage.
Okay.
Okay? So if your driveway on the, on the left-hand side of your, if that's, say, 10 feet wide, which probably isn't, it's probably more like 8, Marshall, something like that?
Um, I would, looks, if that's representative, I didn't...
So if it's 10 by 50?
Yeah, it's 10.
So if it's 10 by, if it's 10 by 70, if that's what...
No, that's the left lot line, so it's probably 10 by 50. If you took that out, that would probably be in rough calculations.
And then, that said, you can make it a crushed stone, and that becomes a pervious surface. So you could still have the function of the driveway. As someone who has a dirt driveway, it's a nuisance when you snow blow it.
Absolutely.
But then you don't need to get a variance, which is a much harder hurdle to jump over.
Yeah, the Dedrick case would kill you.
You know, we're sympathetic to the Park Ave people. That said, variances are
A variance.
Especially with this border, are much harder to get than they were even a few years ago here. Do you want to redo some...
Can we continue?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd love to, and...
You know what, but another thing is, we'd like to see a drawing of the, of the structure itself, how you're going to...
I have.
Okay, you do? All right, I just didn't see it here.
Yeah, no, I don't think it was included.
We'll make sure it's included.
Right, next time you come, definitely. Because that way there, we'll get an idea of what you're actually building, too. All right?
We'll make sure it's not the pump or shower or something.
Right. But do you see what we're saying now?
I get you, so, I mean, as of today, the decision would be no? With the coverage I have?
Well, we're not going to say that. We're not going to say that. We're just going to say that
I can do the best I can.
We just said a variance is something that we...
Okay.
Difficult, but there are solutions here for you, so...
Without doing a smaller addition.
And the board's being generous to you by allowing you to come back and not render, you don't want them to make a decision tonight based on the information here.
Sure.
So it's your best interest to come back
Understood.
With the information that's required.
Okay.
All right, so what do we actually want him to come back with now?
The calculations.
Calculations.
Calculations. The calculations on?
Have those, have him draw on the plot plan.
Minus existing driveway?
Yeah, he'll show existing, and then he'll show with the calculations, and then he'll show proposed.
Okay.
And the calculations of the coverage, and that will help them make their decision. Plus, it will let you, with your engineer, determine what you're going to have, and you'd be happy with for access.
Okay.
Okay.
Put on time frame, right, if we continue this? Who's filed with...
Nancy?
11:15?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you don't have to notify the neighbors again, you've already done that, correct?
So if you wish to attend next month's hearing, sir, then you will not get a separate notice. This is your notice, once we make our motion. Given that, judging on what Mr. Loughlin said, I'd like to make a motion to continue this hearing to the January
11th.
11th, at 7:05.
With those calculations in hand, and also...
Some artist sketch.
Yeah, of the...
Final project.
Exactly.
Okay.
What it will look like. All right? All in favor?
No, we need a second.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, where's me?
Where are we?
Where's me cheat sheet?
There we go. Lost one.
It being...
7:45.
It being after 7:05, Abington Zoning Board Appeals will hear, hold a petition on, a hearing on the petition of Peter and Sandra Morrell, 226 Colonel Hunt Drive, Abington, for 10-foot frontage variances for lots created in 1949 prior to zoning on 226 and 236 Colonel Hunt Drive, under 17529, property located on Assessors Map 31, Lot 152 and 153, in the R30 Zone.
Okay, no bearing on the saw system? If it works. Sir?
Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing Mr. and Mrs. Morrell. Peter Morrell is here with me tonight, Mrs. Morrell couldn't be with us. I'm hoping you were able to look at some of the materials that I submitted with the application. Peter and his wife have lived up on Colonel Hunt Drive since 2004 in, on their lot, and I did include a copy of the plan of the neighborhood, the 48, the 40 lot plan, and then I blew it up, so you could kind of read it a little bit better. And it indicates that Lot 36, as shown on the plan, is the Morrell's health, yeah, house lot, I'm sorry. And Lot 37 was a vacant lot next door that was owned by the family, by his, actually Sandra's father, some time ago. As you can see, this is an R30 zone, and these lots in the entire, in the entire street, Colonel Hunt Drive, were created in 1949 by the recorded plan, again, which you have a copy of.
That's this one?
Exactly. What we're proposing tonight is, is not to change anything on the plan. Under the merger principle of zoning, the Morrels got tripped up in trying to sell the vacant lot, and I'll try to explain that a little bit better. But as you can see, Lot 36, their house lot, complies with the 30,000 square foot minimum. It has 53,710 square feet, well over the requirement. And the Lot 37 that Sandra owns has 31,380, so that has more than the 30,000. They each have 100 feet of frontage, they've always had 100 feet of frontage. That's the way it was designed on the original plan, that's the way it's always been conveyed. Both of these lots have always been separately conveyed in separate deeds. And currently, Peter and Sandra own the house. And Sandra and her brother had inherited the vacant lot when her father passed away a number of years ago. I know I submitted, Peter submitted some details in writing, too, but there was a need to sell the vacant lot to cure some financial hardships in the family. And so the trust that had owned the property, after the estate was resolved, his brother gave up ownership so that Sandra could sell it and try to address some of the needs. And I did show you some copies of some of the recorded documents that demonstrate the financial hardship issues. Just to show you, you know, in Peter and Sandra's mind, they thought everything was going well. They went to the Conservation Commission, they already got approval from the Conservation. I think you have a copy of the order of conditions with you, if not, I did bring a copy. That's already been taken care of with the Conservation Commission. So they applied for the building permit through Marshall, and Marshall, doing his due diligence, just inquired if the same owner had ever owned both of the abutting lots, because one was vacant. On the principles of merger, you have to be careful sometimes if you own a house lot, and then you own, you buy a vacant lot next to it, and if the zoning changes or gets increased. For example, when the lots were created, when the house was built, the 100-foot lot was completely compliant. And the other 100-foot lot was completely compliant. But as zoning changed over the years, Abington instituted the 110-foot requirement. Now, everyone on that street's grandfathered in, whether they have 105 or 107. The neighbor on the other side is 107 feet. The house, the Morrell's owner, have 100 feet, the one in the lot in the middle is 100 feet. But as long as that other lot was held by another owner, there was no issue. That was also grandfathered. But Marshall asked the Morrels to check it, and so they called me and asked me to do a title search and research it. And much to their dismay, and again, being the bearer of bad news, I had to tell them that about 39 years ago, it was actually held under common ownership, put into the same trust, whether intentional or not, it was done by a prior owner. This, I just want to show you, just for your record. This is a copy of Lot 36, which is the house lot. And on the first page on the top, that is the current deed
Thank you.
into Peter and Sandra. That's, this is, again, the house lot. And on the second page of that, I went back through time, and I just gave you a copy of this deed, because it shows a deed into the San Gene Realty Trust. And that in itself is really not an issue, except when I looked at the title, the abutting lot. And this is now the paperwork for the vacant lot. The top deed just shows that the, it's what they call a deed of distribution, when someone, an owner dies, it's a new thing in the law, where the estate deeds it out of the estate. So Mr. Joe... So when Mr. Johnson passed away, the 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 people in charge of the estate, the representative of state conveyed it out into Sandra Morrell and Stephen Johnson as the co-trustees of the Hughway Johnson Trust Agreement of two thousand and three, that's what the top one shows. And then the second page shows that that trust recently conveyed it into Sandra with the intention that Sandra, as we explained in our, our letter to you, was going to sell it and repay some financial debts. Go back in time even further on page three, and that's where I found the issue, is there's a deed back there with the same lot, even though it was two separate deeds. You just saw prior, uh, in the prior packet, lot thirty-six had a deed that went into the San Gene Realty Trust, here's a deed to lot thirty-seven back in nineteen seventy-eight that went into the San Gene Realty Trust. So I.
So that basically merged them.
Exactly.
And made it, um.
It merged them into one large lot. So now they have a two hundred five, two hundred-foot lot with over eighty thousand square feet in an R thirty zone. They've, not knowing this, when they look at their deed and they look at the other deed, it says there's two separate lots, you look at the plan, it's two separate lots, there's a hundred feet of frontage and there's more than enough area. But because of what happened in nineteen seventy-nine, they're stuck with the issue that in order to keep their house and sell that lot, they need to ask for a ten-foot variances for the two lots, because they have a hundred feet and not the current requirement of a hundred and ten feet. I would say, I mean, obviously, this is not a self-inflicted hardship, it wasn't, they didn't create this nineteen seventy-nine issue, they didn't even own the house back then, but it is something that they have to deal with.
I'm I'm sorry. When you bought the house at the time, sir, you didn't, you weren't buying the second lot, although your wife might have owned a piece of the second lot.
No.
Family or something.
No, when we bought the house, my father-in-law owned the second lot.
Okay.
There was never the intention, first of all, that I would be sitting here trying to sell the second lot. It was always, we were just gonna keep that thing for privacy, call it a day.
Right.
Um, and upon his passing, it went into the trust. It only came to Sandra because we owned the lot next door. And the family said, well, we don't want it, means nothing to us, so she just got it.
Got it.
And it, we never even paid attention to it, we've been paying the taxes on it. You know, would write a check quarterly for the taxes on the property, but until, that's why it only recently was conveyed in Sandra's name only, because we were perfectly fine with it staying in the trust.
Right.
Because we had no intentions of doing anything with the lot. So.
Yeah, it's it's a convoluted.
And my father-in-law always kept it as separate lots, because to, he owned H Johnson Landscape. He, every year to start up the landscape service, he would borrow against the lot. That was his security to grab. He would take a second mortgage on that, on that lottery.
No, the drainage easement, what's that?
That's just, uh, road drainage, it's been there since the beginning of time, there's a little pipe that comes out, and part of the conservation approval was to clean up that area and actually extend the drainage easement. It's actually gonna be a betterment to the property. Yeah. Because that that old drainage pipe that's currently there has collapsed and gotten, Colonel Hunt floods in that point, because it's where it comes out of, like, if this was the lot, it, Colonel Hunt, the drive is here, comes out and it drains onto the property. What the, what we're proposing is that we're gonna clean this out, we're gonna rebuild all that, and then extend that pipe, fresh new pipe, all the way down the back. So it's actually, that's a betterment that honestly, I didn't even know was, I didn't even know that was part of it, until we looked at it.
Some questions now, are you building a house there or are you selling the lot?
Selling the lot, uh, a, selling the lot to a home builder, but it's subject to the home builder getting the building permit, this is what triggered it.
And of course, we're only talking one home, correct?
Right, single-family house.
I'm looking at the neighbors, and they seem to all have the required frontage.
No, next door is a hundred and seven feet, because we look at that too, could we buy land from next door, but that's a hundred and seven feet of frontage and.
Big magnifying glass to see this?
Yeah, well, um, it's a hundred.
I did see a couple of the lots up here though, that the frontage is is definitely under requirements of today.
Yeah, there's, the the. The the two immediate lots to the left and right are.
Eighteen.
The house lot of a hundred feet, which of course, we can't cut off ten feet from the house lot.
Right, right.
And then you can't go on the other side and cut off ten feet, because they have a hundred and seven, so the hardship is there.
Now, if frontage with us is kind of tricky, I mean, we have turned people down for frontage.
Right, and and part of the requirement of the variances, does it derogate from the intent, you know, or harm the neighborhood? This is the original design of the neighborhood, we're not changing anything about the lot.
But you do realize that, you know, we have turned down other frontage issues.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, well, with this one here though, you're not talking about building a house behind a house, you're talking about building a single home.
Right, in fact, the wetlands is in the rear of the lot, so you, it's not zoned, it's only zoned for one lot and it, and it's only for, I mean, for one house, I should say. So yes, one house on lot thirty-seven.
I can read it with this. And you know when the hundred and ten foot requirement came in?
Um, I did do some research, I believe.
Nineties.
It was.
Even before the nineties, I believe.
Because what, under merger, it's it's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, mostly started nineteen seventy-five.
Whatever zoning after the lot.
The lot right next to it has lots.
As the zoning changed over time, it it just became non-conforming.
Yeah.
Cause the state enabling act started nineteen seventy-five.
The, in, back in nineteen seventy-six, amended through eighty-four, it was a hundred and ten-ish.
Yeah, so it's been existing all along.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was, the fact that Mr. Johnson passed away and it went into the estate trust under terms of his will, that was fine, it was still separate. But when, oops, sorry. It's, it's, it's still a separate lot with ten, uh, sorry, a hundred feet of frontage, not a hundred and ten feet of frontage.
Right.
If it never went into the San Gene Realty Trust.
Right.
It would have remained a separate lot, but because it happened to do that.
That's where we.
And I think, and I think in his mind, I think what was, he kept deeding it in separate deeds, and he thinks, I think he thought that's how he's keeping it separate. What he didn't realize, by putting the two separate deeds into the same nit, trust, and then deeding them out separately, what he did back then in seventy-nine, it had already triggered it, it was too late, technically, by, under that.
Whoever it was, his attorney then, geez.
It was my father, if that's what you're trying to.
Oh, geez. Uh, they strike that from the.
No, back then, it was, it it was, you know, being kept separate, no, but it is, again, it's, it's something that kind of fell into their lap. The letter, I think, speaks for itself that we submitted, there's some serious issues we'd like to address. And we have, um, how can I say this, we've got some permission for some delays that are in effect right now, because we didn't expect this delay in the building permit.
Correct.
So people are working with us and, uh, we're here at your mercy to ask for the variances to each lot so that they can maintain them at a hundred feet.
Okay, um, any more questions, guys?
I don't have any.
Kick it out to the, um, the audience, any questions from the audience? Okay, bring it back to the board. All right, so, um, Marshall, you have anything to say?
No, he perfectly well explained it, when they became, uh, owned, um, by the same person, that's when, unfortunately, they lost their grandfathered rights to both lots, so he's asking for the ten feet for both.
Right, yeah, and again, uh, it's something that we don't, we 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 have issues with, with the frontage. And the the thing about mostly with frontages, when people wanna build behind their existing homes.
Creating pork chop.
Right, exactly, and that's what we're trying to get away from.
And a lot of towns don't allow frontage.
Right, exactly.
And the concern I have here is, is setting any kind of precedence and judging, that's why I was asking about the neighbors.
Right.
Uh, and if there is a few next to it, I can buy into that, but if you're the only ones, then it makes it very difficult, and if I were a neighbor, I'd be upset.
No, and I can see, out of the forty lots on that plan, only four of them are over thirty thousand square feet, and we own two of them.
Yep.
Frontage-wise, I think you've seen everything, this, as I mentioned, there's a number from with a hundred and five, there are some with a hundred and eighty-five, it runs the gamut there.
Yeah, I don't think it's taken away from, um, the whole area here by building one house on that lot.
Well, would it end up being two houses, correct?
No, there's one exists.
One already exists.
Oh, you want, the ones already, already there.
So you're asking ten-foot variance, strictly.
Strictly.
For both.
And, uh, what, the only concern again is setting the precedent and the character of the neighborhood and all that stuff, we have to. And the hardship has to be proven in all of these, in the, uh, topography, soil, and if any of those, that's fatal.
Well, I thi- I think we are hitting on some of that when we talk about the, the shape of the, the lot and 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 financial and.
Yeah, this is, to me, this is a lot that was, and a neighborhood that was created nineteen forty-nine.
Yes, yeah.
It's been demonstrated what, you know, the applicant is asking for is not different from the initial plan.
Yes. It's just been a lot open for a long period of time.
The hardship is kind of the, you know, it's, but it's the shape of the lot.
The shape, definitely, yeah.
Where it was initially designed to be a hundred's, uh, foot frontage. I don't think, in my opinion, granting this would be detrimental to the neighborhood or.
Conform with the current neighborhood structure.
Yeah, it's it's in conformity and and hopefully the, you know, if the builder puts in something that fits with the neighborhood, then.
It's all good.
You know, it helps, but again, we don't see a lot in the neighbor, we don't see a lot of neighbors in an uproar.
Mr. and Mrs. Dean, who owned the house on the other side of this vacant lot, we're here earlier and, um, Mr. Morrell has spoken to him on numerous occasions. They just stopped up to express their support and said they didn't want to bother staying, but, um, I mean, you had mentioned in the previous hearing, he has talked to his neighbors.
Okay.
And I, I mean, I at least feel like we're not setting a precedent, we're not creating.
The lot itself, it's.
No, yeah.
Exactly, you don't want the neighbors coming through and saying, he got it, why can't I get it?
Right.
I hear that and that drives me nuts.
This is basically completing what someone started back in the forties. You're putting that last option.
This is essentially just correcting the clerical error from thirty years ago.
And that's, yeah, so this has a lot of, a lot of issues. Does anybody want to make a motion?
If I can find my thing, I will.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion on the petition of Peter and Sandra Morrell, two two six Colonel Hunt Drive, Abington, for ten-foot frontage variances for lots created in nineteen forty-nine on, uh, at two two six and two three six Colonel Hunt Drive under one seven five two nine, property located on assessors map thirty-one, lot one fifty-two and one fifty-three in the R thirty zone, be approved.
Second?
I'll second.
All approved?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Best of luck with everything.
Good luck.
All right?
Take care.
Good luck. Take care.
I'll talk to you.
No, really?
All right.
Okay, um.
Yep.
It being after seven ten P M, Abington Zoning Board Appeals, hear the petition of Robert W. Lennox, Christine Lennox, forty-five Robbins Ave, Abington, for special permit under one seventy-five twenty-six C to allow construction of new home with three-car garage over eight seventy-five square feet at twenty-three Belcher Street, lot one, Veterans Place subdivision, property located on assessors map twenty-four, lot sixty-seven in the R thirty zone.
Okay, and this, um, let's see, this is, this has been approved by the board, uh, or the source, the source commission, excuse me, uh, January thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Okay?
Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street, here representing Robert and Christine Lennox, who are sitting up here with me.
How you doing?
How you doing?
The Lennoxes have, um, they're building a new house in Abington on what is known as Belcher Street, it's the new subdivision off of Plymouth Street, Veterans Place. The builder is also here with us, Mr. Yegan.
How you doing?
We have submitted to you our application, and attached to the application is a copy of the elevation plans of the new home. We've also attached a copy of the floor plans, uh, that show the location and layout of the garage, and we also attached, um, a large copy of the actual plan of the lot and the location of the house on the lot. We're here tonight simply for a special permit under one seventy-five twenty-six C for, to ask for a special permit to allow a garage, a three-bay garage that exceeds the eight hundred and seventy-five threshold. The eight hundred and seventy-five square foot threshold was put into the Bilar a number of years ago, I think it was two thousand and three, because at the time, there was no maximum limit. You could build a J Leno garage and put a sixteen-car garage in a residential neighborhood, and there was nothing the board or the building inspector could do to stop it, as long as they conform with setbacks. So, um, the town initiated this, eight seventy-five, for a typical kind of a three-bay garage, but with not a lot of extra room in it. And here, we're asking for a garage that has about, I think it's about a hundred and one extra square feet. And the reason for that, really, the typical garages, many of us may know, old garages, doesn't have a lot of space between the bays, so you have to be careful when you open the doors, and nowadays, um, if it's like my garage, I can't put my trash barrels next to my car, because there's not enough room between the wall and the, and the garage door. And Mr. Lennox has, um, one of his hobbies is he he owns, well, can I, let's grab a photo of the car, he owns a limited edition car that essentially, and as we said in our application, we don't wanna get it dinged.
That'll be a Mustang, correct?
Yeah.
Very nice.
If you have any questions about the car, Mr. Lennox can answer, it's above me. Christine owns a Ford Denali, a rather large SUV, and he also owns a pickup truck.
I don't think that's a Ford.
I mean, uh, sorry, what is it?
Uh, GMC.
GMC, do I, sorry. He owns a Ford pickup.
He owns a Ford truck.
There we go.
So the, we wanna make sure the vehicles don't bump into each other, essentially. And, you know, one of the things I'm sure the board will be concerned is, you know, does it fit on the lot, are we getting too close to the neighbors, and as the plan shows, we're required to stay twenty feet away from the lot line, we're thirty-four feet away from the lot line on one side and forty-eight feet away from the lot on one side. So I hope you would conclude that there's no issues with approaching our neighbors, and it's a brand-new subdivision, everyone is is developing and designing their new houses. So it's a beautiful house, um, it's a great design, this is, I don't think, kind of over the top, it fits in there very nicely. The car, I can tell you, is, is a limited edition car, worth in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, we would kind of.
Don't be telling me that.
That's what we do, we're just debating whether to say anything.
Yeah, it's on TV now.
The doors will always be locked and there's a huge alarm system.
Big dog, right, you're a big dog, right?
So it's just something that, you know, it's an investment and it's a, you know, be a nice addition to the town and the neighborhood. If you have any questions of, about the layout, the building, the construction, or the car.
I, I, the only question I have, again, is gonna be, great for you and the car and all that, but the important thing is, does it detriment, become something against the character, the detrimental to the neighborhood, and are we setting any kind of precedence? And that's the only concern I have.
Well, this is only a special permit, though, it's not a variance.
No, I understand that, but I don't want, that's, so that someone down the road comes in here and said, you got it, I want it, and set something going. I, I don't have a problem with this, really, I. It's my concern.
So, well, when I look at this, I mean, I mean, it is a basic, maybe one garage more than typical some houses, I mean.
Right.
I mean, it's overdone, I I would say. What 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 lot number is it again?
One.
One.
It's one, on the, on this sheet, it's one?
I don't see, is that right?
Yeah, it will be the second house in, the sixty-seven A is gonna be our corner.
That's the lot.
Oh, okay, that that's showing me a little better, yeah.
Approximately, how many square feet is the house gonna be?
Uh, I believe it's around thirty-five hundred square feet.
So it's a large house, so you're not putting, you know, a nine hundred square foot garage onto my range.
Right.
Well, our existing.
Which I wouldn't mind, but we're not gonna.
In the neighborhood, we have seventeen lots total, we have ten of them already sold, this and one other have three-car garages. The other one conforms to the size, this one was slightly bigger, and of the other houses, the, most of them are somewhere between, uh, you know, twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred square feet, so I think this will fit in with what else they have, I don't think it's gonna stand out, uh, that this.
It's not a small lot, I mean, it's a larger lot too, so.
I guess my only concern with this is about scale and how it looks, and that's why I asked about the car, because what I don't want to approve are, uh, like, commercial garage doors.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
And like a Yukon Denali, you know, I have an SUV, will not fit, mine will not fit in my standard garage. A minivan would fit in my, in the garage, but, you know, a pickup truck or something like that is too tall. So, you know, what I'm hoping is that there's something in between, um, you know, a standard garage door, which is what, seven feet tall or six and a half feet tall?
Seven by nine.
You have to say, this door's a nine by eight, all the houses I build are nine wide, eight tall.
Yeah, I was just gonna speak to that point.
So that's in scale and in keeping with the neighborhood, and so it's not something you're gonna get an earth mover in.
Right, and it's not the garage doors that are larger here, it's it's the space between the garage doors, so you have the door swinging, this is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why it's it's over the eight seventy-five, it's just so you're not dinging, you know, car to car, because a ding on this car would cost a lot.
Ears.
You don't plan on selling that car, do you?
No.
You're, uh, you're only talking about. You're only talking about a hundred.
You're, uh, you're only talking about, you're only talking about a hundred feet.
Yeah, I think it's a hundred and one, if you...
I mean, uh, okay.
Again, my concern, I didn't want...
Industrial logging process.
Yeah, I didn't want ten twelve-foot high garage doors, and then drive by going, "What the hell did I approve?"
No, because then I think you're right, it's out of character and all.
It, it looks like a beautiful design, I must say.
Right, it is, thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Leno might be interested in buying it.
He's got one.
Sure he does. Any more questions, guys, or?
Officially open it to the floor?
Yes, I'm going to officially open it to the floor, any questions, no? All right, closing to the floor, bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion on the petition of Robert and Christine Lennox, forty-five, Robbins Ave, Abington, for special permit under one-seventy-five-twenty-six C, to allow construction of new home with a three-car garage over eight-hundred-and-seventy-five